Are you all set?
I'm good.
Okay.
I was just admiring what Hannah's doing over there.
What hand? Okay, hold up, I'm trying to find one. Okay, so we'll call this meeting to order at 6:03. To start, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay. Moving on, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th.
So moved.
Right, moved by Hannah.
Ryan Second.
Ryan Second. Okay, is there any further discussion? No? Okay, since we're all in person, I'll just do a yea nay vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes of April 4th, 2024, please say yea.
Yea.
Or aye. Yea. All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Okay. Minutes are approved, board is zero. Okay. So I'm really excited that we have people in attendance today. And so I'm gonna read the public participation comments rules. We ask that all speakers direct their comments to the board directly and not to the audience. Each speaker will have three minutes, and no one speaks until recognized. No shouting or profanity, no questions or comments about specific personnel. On these matters, we ask you go through appropriate administrative channels. We will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect any divergent views that others possess likewise. You may expect any restrictions will be viewpoint neutral. Please do not expect the board to respond to your questions or comments tonight. We take your concerns seriously, and we want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if it requires them. There seems, if there seems to be an issue that ought to be followed up on, we may respond at a future board meeting or have an appropriate staff member get back to you at an appropriate time. So that said, a public meeting is not legally required, but we believe it is crucial for us to hear from all of our community members. And through these meetings, our boards model how students conduct public discourse, and that the board and the members of our community can approach controversial issues in a civil and constructive manner and can demonstrate mutual respect. Board is here to listen, and the public comment period is not designed for discussion. Please start by identifying yourself and what town you reside in. So with that read, is there any comments from the public? Okay. Any announcements from board members? Do we, we have, must have, oh, you will have them in the administrative report, exciting things coming up.
I do.
So we will, we will go with those. Okay. Moving on, administrative report.
All right. So Lindsay is not here tonight, and Alina is online at home resting her sore back. So I'm gonna present tonight. Okay. So as is typical, Lindsay always starts with some highlights that are going on at the school. So in the slide that you can see up there, there are a couple of students receiving heart awards. I think we recognize one of them.
We didn't even know she was getting it.
You'll see Chief Frank in one of the pictures having some fun with a student. There's a kindergarten student drawing an art class. And then there is a gentleman, I don't know him, named Colin McKay. He came and used some robots with the second grader, so that's the photograph in the corner there. Yes, very cool. The next slide highlights the community dinner middle school event, which was Asian themed. That was pretty awesome. I was able to just stop by and see some of the displays and have some of the food. And it was certainly a collaborative effort by a large group of students and staff that put that together. So it was a very, very big success. So those are the highlights. I think I saw some of you there, it was a pretty, pretty good event. Staffing updates, so these, the following people will not be returning next year. They did not sign their letters of intent, so it's not, you don't have to approve the resignation. But just to keep you updated, Michelle Carlson, who's a middle school language teacher, LA teacher. Our Spanish teacher, Jessica Ramirez, is moving on. And Lacy Tang Creedy is not returning next year, so.
Is she moving on, or is she staying home?
I think she's gonna be staying home, so. She'll be greatly missed, she's phenomenal, they're all phenomenal teachers, but Lacy's been here a little bit longer, so.
Yeah.
She's been more connected. We have one SEI who is not returning next year, and that's Marley Dube. So those are the people who are moving on. And for staffing updates, Lindsay just, she put that, they're working on interviewing. I know they are, I've talked to some of the applicants. And she'll have the, she'll bring the names at the next board meeting.
Okay.
They are, we are closing the.
Hi Heather.
Welcome. The assistant principal interview, so there are two, two finalists that Lindsay and I interview tomorrow. So these interviews will include two people, so we'll have that.
And the finalists, are we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
So that will be tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, that is Lindsay's report, now onto your last.
Okay.
Cool.
I gotta be your school, don't I?
Yeah. So I think appropriately, the theme of April was community, which, you know, kind of specifically, the community dinner, which was obviously a big hit, that was loved by lots of attendants. And then the eighth grade spaghetti supper, which was, you know, it wasn't like class, but as a community dinner, but lots of the community came, so that was amazing. And just kind of the overall feeling of community. General news, you know, a little bit of a repeat here, but the community dinner was amazing, and the spaghetti supper was also, went really well. And the eighth grade will be able to go on a trip despite some weather issues of cancellation in the fall. But spaghetti supper went really well, so that's great. I might be, I might be a little biased.
That's your fundraising for the trip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the drama club went to go see Weathersfield's preview of Beauty and the Beast, which was amazing. Everyone really enjoyed that, and I actually went back that night, and it was really good. Yeah, that was a lot of fun. And then the whole middle school went to see Windsor's dress rehearsal, the audition, which is also a lot of fun. That was kind of nice for the whole middle school to get to go see that. So everyone was kind of introduced to theater a little bit, so that was a lot of fun. And so this month's grade was second grade, but it had to be done a little bit differently because of the age of the second graders. So I sent the form to the teacher, and then the teacher kind of took a poll and then put the like summary up there, so have they been working on any projects? Have they been learning about the earth and how it came to be and what it is made of, so kind of like earth science. It was the best in-school thing that happened. They enjoyed the all-school meeting, so I'm assuming that's like the Wildcat wrap-up. Miss T's return and the Asian culture fair.
Miss T's return.
I know.
And now. We're going to return to the return of our next.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looking forward to in May, looking forward to a walking field trip to the rec that they earned as a special celebration for working together as a team. And a couple of May birthdays. And they're planning to do an investigation into processes that shape the earth during their final steam of May. So looking forward to all of that. And the overwhelming word to describe April was awesome. And then they, so that was really nice. And then they added, PS, we were hoping for some new playground equipment. I was like, hmm, okay. Like, we're trying, because we're getting too big for what we have, which, as the second graders, you know. But. But yeah, so it sounded like.
What playground do the second graders use? Do they use the?
The main.
Because they use the big one.
They use the big one, okay. The main one, not the side.
Yeah, the main one.
So, yep, that was.
That's your report? Awesome.
All right. Events that are coming up, kindergarten registration is later this month on the 17th. There is no school on the 27th. And music and art showcases on June 3rd at 5:30. And I have the graduation dates in my report.
Is that how that's different than the music, like is the?
I had the impression there's still information to come about that, there, it is to be defined.
They're string concerts like the 23rd or something.
It's the 23rd, it's the day for the drum trip.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of, and then we have the Tuesday after we get back is the, we'll have the assembly.
Oh, that's right.
There's like a block of much stuff, but it's kind of nice, so we can get it all.
We send each other.
We got.
The theme will be assemble.
Yeah? So Anne Steving will be showcasing art that night along with Mike Foley and some different things that he's working on.
Oh, cool. So is it more for like the lower grades?
I'm, I'm not positive of all of it, because I know Ms. Bernstein is also working to make sure that this is all just kind of going off with a hit. So I'm not exactly sure of the music part, but I do know that there is gonna be the art showcase as well that night. So they're trying to put everything together.
Awesome.
All right. As always, my report is linked, my full report is linked, so maybe you've heard some of it at the SU board meeting, but worth highlighting a couple of things from that report. So this was the question of the month for April. And we had a fairly good turnout of people who responded, and the questions were about student-led conferences. So as you can see from the graphs up there, starting on the left-hand side, the question was, student-led conferences help me understand my child's perception of their strengths and challenges as a learner? And there was agreement on some, mostly agreement on that, but some people disagreed. The middle question was, leadership portfolios and student-led conferences help my child take ownership of their learning? And there was a large portion of people that agreed or strongly agreed with that. And as a parent, I felt supported to participate in the process. So overall, the feedback was fairly positive. I have some comments I'm gonna share with you, because there was a comment section for parents as well. Overwhelmingly, parents thought they were pretty positive, and it was really first time around, so we're gonna get better and better. But there was, there was a definite feel for having a part of the, a part of the conference be student-led and a part of the conference be just with the parent and the teacher. So we'll work on figuring out how to do that. But most people thought it was great to see the kids involved, allowed them to show what they're doing in school. One parent said, it makes sense to connect the proficiencies, students are mastering in classes to the process more, which is a great, great feedback. Again, we'd love to more, more from the teacher, but it was nice to have their, their child present. And there were, you know, a few people, a handful of people that didn't think it was appropriate or should be optional. So that was the data collected from the question of the month for May. The question in the, I'm sorry, for April, for May is Angie is leading, and it's around the CIP, the Continuous Plan. So she's trying to get feedback.
I've never seen your last superintendent report. I remember seeing your question.
About the.
It was at the SU meeting?
Yeah. Usually in your superintendent's report.
Corner.
I don't know.
It's corner, you mean?
Yeah. I don't know, I didn't see it.
I better know.
Yeah. Because I always look for it, so I can answer it.
I will, I'll check that.
So I love surveys.
As a follow-on to the April question?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still worried about the kids whose parents don't come.
Yeah, and we had, we had a few.
Yeah, and I wonder if we surveyed those kids about how, you don't want to highlight the kid and their parent's not gonna come, but like you also want them, I mean, part of the reason that we're doing it is so that the kids present.
Right.
And it's part of learning, and so to have kids who.
So in my, in my school, I, I sat in as a parent on some.
Yeah.
So like they were presenting to me that learning and things.
Okay, so we did, it's not like they're just sitting there.
Yeah.
So every student had an opportunity to present.
Oh, great.
If the parent couldn't make it, it was, it was in the building.
Awesome. And it was the evening time, so it's not like it was during the school day where. Oh, did some split different.
Some were, yeah, it depended.
Okay.
And some, some were remote only, which, you know, is a way to really increase participation. So those students, we haven't figured out, we weren't prepared enough for those students to present remotely, so we need to work on that. We do offer that option. And I'll check on that May survey, Heather, may not have made it.
Or maybe I just missed it.
It could happen, well, me too. Okay. We're gonna discuss this later on, but I wanted to just give you the details. There is a new mandatory child tax care tax that goes into effect July 1st. It's a 0.44% tax on wages. The employer can pass off up to 0.11 to the employee. And we voted on this at the SU board meeting last month. We voted that the employer would carry that tax for SU employees. Nana Scottney had their board meeting last night, they voted to have the employer pay the full tax. You'll need to decide tonight what you're gonna do as a board. And we'll do that under titles for discussion. And last slide is graduations, they're coming up, before you know it. I listed them all, because you're invited to all of them, please come to as many as you can. We've got three happening on June 12th. One at nine, one at 9:00 AM.
You're just gonna be talking.
One at Heartland. Four, and then Windsor Middle School at 6:00.
Are you gonna survive that?
Yes, yeah. I'll be fine.
Okay.
And then we're in the.
Like the winds are. That's funny, no spaghetti tickets for me.
No card, sorry.
That's right. Maybe you can get like some sessions to get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it'll be great, hopefully the weather won't cooperate in it. So we're trying to get kids involved in planning a little bit of the graduation as well. So I know the high school kids, Kate asked them what they wanted, and they selected her to be their, their guest speaker. So she was pretty, pretty excited about that. So it's coming fast, hopefully you can make it. Nikki, I think you have to make it, because you have to speak. Or somebody does, you can delegate. And that is the end of that report.
You can let Julian do it.
Yeah.
Julian can speak.
Okay, any, any questions or anything, please shout them out. Otherwise, Nikki, it's, we're on, back to you.
Yeah. Okay. So now we'll move on to the budget discussion again. So Lindsay prepared a presentation, do you have that, Christine?
I do. Do you want me to pull it up?
Yeah, at the beginning.
I know that she was preparing this for the informational meeting.
Yeah.
You're gonna share it tonight, some of it? Pull it up.
Yeah, we talked about, I think it's her tonight. We need to add. Yeah, so this is the same pretty much as.
It's, it's, I think she's, she's edited a bit, but not drastically.
Okay, so we have the informational session on the 21st. And we are required to vote on the exact same budget that we had approved at the last session. The last vote. Are we making sure that the word is getting out better? Yeah, I mean, I need all of your guys' help. Yeah, what are some things we can do? Well, so Christine and I are putting together an informational sheet, which we can pull up. You saw I made that, that's on the.
Yes, I did, I saw it today.
So we're putting together an informational sheet, we did, we thought we are assigned. How many, yep, 20, they're in my car. 20. So the board is gonna head to Christine's car afterwards, and we'll have a discussion, actually, well, Christine's pulling it up. We can have a discussion.
It's loading.
Of where we want to put them now. I mean, I think we want to distribute on all the major roads. And then I think we want to hit Queechee for people that don't come south and only go into Queechee.
Yeah, I mean, I put some, like at the intersection of.
Yeah, and then maybe like.
Is that true for Route 12, too?
What?
Is that true for Route 12, that people just.
Yeah, you're right, we should put some out, as well.
Yeah.
As well.
They're outside.
Yeah, and then. I'm thinking under all of the welcome to Heartland signs.
Yep.
So how many of those are there?
Actually, I don't know, I know there's one on 12.
Yeah, there's one near my house.
There's one on 5.
There's one on 5, there's one on Queechee.
Yeah, there's one on 5.
Yes. Is there one on 5 in North Heartland though?
I think it's missing.
Yeah, yeah, it's up. Why, I think, unless I'm misthinking, but, you know, just past the yellow farm.
Yeah, it's, I, I drove past it the other day, and it wasn't there.
Oh, it didn't go.
I don't know.
That's something.
I was like, nah, I thought there used to be a sign there, it's welcome to Heartland.
As if there's empty.
Yeah.
Oh, that's rough. Well, I guess we're.
We'll have to sign.
Go for the school budget. Okay. So, yeah, so I'm up for any suggestions on how to get word out. I, I will fully admit that this time of my life is not good, like, I'm stretched about as thin as I possibly can be. And it's really difficult to. So I think, you know. Spend all my time on the.
Of course the list serve, like, I don't know if it's worth putting it out.
Yeah.
Every four days or something.
That's what I'm thinking.
People.
And I'm wondering.
Do we want to just make sure, have we talked to the PTO, they have the PTO board up front? Just to make sure that people know that the vote is April 28th on that, or excuse me, May 28th.
Does the PTO have a mailing list?
I can ask, I'm not sure.
But they, they have that little board.
They have the board at drop-off, so like every parent.
That's the PTO.
That's the PTO's board, so I bet you could ask Trish and Ela outside, we can just make sure people know that the, you know, school budget vote is.
And they, they've got a Facebook page that they could probably.
Okay.
Reach out to as well, they could post to.
The PTO?
Yep.
Okay, and have Larry put it on. We will put it on the website as soon as we have our document ready to go.
Okay, and I think we need to have. Oh, we, we don't have that ready yet. Is Linda in charge of the Facebook page here?
Yes.
Okay, we should have her just, you know.
What about the front porch forums, is that, we use that here?
Yeah, there are some people on it. Is there any big event happening in Heartland anytime between now and the vote? Like.
There's the farmer's market.
There's the truck, what's the.
The truck.
What's the truck situation this weekend?
Somewhere.
Next weekend.
But I mean, we should have a couple signs that are out right at the.
Yeah, the recs, yeah. So I was just saying, if there's like a big event, we should probably, yeah. And the rec center's probably gonna be helpful as well, I wonder if we could even, I don't know. I guess we're reaching the same population, I guess we want to reach the whole community.
Make sure where those are.
Yeah. I wonder if there's events at the library. Yeah.
Because there's one.
Oh, yeah, library, I'll put something for library.
I mean, they would just, wouldn't they just let us have, put one out on the laundry, by the screen, right?
Yeah, no, I'm talking about like, are there any big events at the library? Because if there's like an event and we've got an informational sheet, we can put those out.
Oh, somebody has a question.
I'm sure.
Kurt, Kurt's up there.
Kurt has the non-school population contact.
He's got his hand up. Kurt, you can talk, did you put your hand up for, on purpose? I can't hear you, he's muted, but. You're muted.
All right.
Hey, we got you, thank you.
My question is, just relaying a question that people have been asking me, is there gonna be a way that they can mail in votes, vote early, pick up the ballot and do it before the 28th? Or does it all?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, my understanding, and Christine, if you know different, my understanding is that everybody that had a mail-in vote before would automatically be mailed a vote?
Yep, by the town clerk.
Yeah.
And the ballots came in yesterday, they were delivered yesterday.
So you can walk into town hall tomorrow. You can walk into town hall tomorrow and vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then I think it like stays sealed until, yeah, as like, as if it's an absentee, right?
And absentee ballots will go out.
Right.
Yeah.
Super, thank you.
Okay. I think getting an informational at the library is really good. Should we print out some more of those postcards? I'm just wondering with the link to the budget, in budget presentation, I'm just thinking, just to hand out, like to have a pile at the library.
Yeah, but we could leave a pile, BG's a pile, like, some people just grab as a way, if people want to get more information and can't attend the informational meeting.
I mean, that's not super cheap to do that, but. Well, is there a way that we can like.
But can we do it, I mean, can we do it on the cheap and just do it? It doesn't have to be fancy cardstock or anything.
Right, just, yeah, just print it and cut.
Can there be some like bullet, like more bullet points? Because I think a lot of people look at something and read it, and then if there's a website, that's what I was gonna.
To avoid the extra stuff.
Christine and I were working on a one pager. Yeah, and I think maybe just.
Yeah.
That I want to go over. And I think like at the bottom, if you want more information, here's this.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah.
But I do think like, like instead of a postcard, more of like a flyer, like full-size.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're working on. Print. Right, colored paper, people can grab it, get information, go and see more information on the.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So we can flip through the presentation. I, I think it's pretty much the same.
It's pretty much the same as before, yeah.
Same budget, so, but one article we're voting on, just the budget.
So, yeah. And I'll take any suggestions on.
I'll just.
Although we go through the supervisory union budget, which is roughly a quarter of the school budget.
Yep. Show it two different ways.
Yeah. And then we go through enrollment. Okay, so then, that was one of my questions, we have a 13% increase in high school tuition costs. And Christine, have you heard, so when the budgets first went out, the, I think the average budget increase was like somewhat between 15 and 18%?
Do you know what the final number was of the high school tuition?
No, it was all state tuition.
Yeah, we looked it up, I'll find it, I don't want to miss.
School budgets.
Yeah, right.
The average school budget.
I meant school budgets.
Yeah, the average school budgets went up by like 15 to 18%.
I haven't got that number series.
Yeah.
What was this?
10.
10, yeah.
So, I mean, we've tried the hell out.
Yeah, that was true.
Originally, we're trying to get that. Right. That went away, changed all the rules on us after creating a budget.
Are you, I'm texting Larry, no, I did look it up, but I don't remember what it was.
Okay, I just feel like that's an important thing to note, too, is like, we're not excited about it.
Where do we land?
What?
Where do we land within the other?
Yeah, like a, like a 10% increase is really high, but compared to everybody else, like we, everybody's facing the same cost drivers. And we all manage to.
You know, the Vermont, yeah, school board association that emails us periodically, someone had sent out a really nice graphic showing, let me try to dig back through, it was a couple months ago, but just showing various town budget increases or decreases, CLAs and subsequent tax changes. So it, it demonstrated the issue, you know, because it showed how Winuski, one second, sorry. It demonstrated how Winuski's, you know, budget has doubled, but their tax rate is going down, just to sort of show the.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Lack of proportional, you know, the lack of relationship between the budget and the tax rate.
Exactly.
To show that they're not tethered.
Right.
Um, and that might be an interesting thing to include.
Yeah, cause I think it's important that people know that we vote on tax, we vote on budgets locally, but that our taxes are calculated separate.
Right. Let me, I'll see if I can find that graphic.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, cause that might give us the average too.
So, then, budget goals?
Yep.
Um, there's a little part of you that, like, wants to take out, like, physically out of there because we've got to, like, take out the playground, which is, like, all the kids...
The second grand is on.
Like, what's what everybody wants is a new playground. And it's like, we, that was like the first thing that, like, got taken right off things, so like, our budget...
Well, it would be a good way to remind, like, where did we start and where are we at?
Yeah.
There are all the cuts that we've already made.
And, you know, just the idea that...
That is, that's lost. We're just, we need to do a last play again.
We lost a little part.
So we're decreasing a teacher from this year.
Oh, yeah.
I just, one quick question, I don't know if I misunderstood, but you said the budget only increased by ten percent from last year's?
Yes.
I got a graph from Larry Dower that shows an increase twenty-eight point three zero percent.
Uh, I think you're talking about the tax rate. The tax rate, the tax rate increased twenty-eight percent, the school budget only increased ten percent.
Doesn't it increase by, I'm sorry, by fifteen percent the first time we...
Yeah, and then we cut down. So we were right in line with the state average increase the first time, and then we chose, we were one of eight districts in the state that chose to make cuts, in hopes of bringing down the tax of statewide, but only eight districts made those choices, and so it didn't make any difference in the tax rate statewide.
Well, thirty, thirty percent of thirty budgets failed.
Thirty budgets failed, so it may still come down. Okay. Yeah, so we've cut one teaching position from this current year. And then...
That was last year, this year we cut...
Right. Oh, right, last, okay, so this current season, we're down one teacher. But for next year, we're down two positions. Right. Okay, so we've removed... So, from two budgets ago, we've removed three teachers.
Yes.
Um, and then we've removed the playground, furniture and lockers. Okay, to get us to fifty thousand dollars. Oh, wait, uh, yeah. Yes, sir.
I have the answer from Larry.
Oh, what is it?
It's changing, it started at eighteen point five, then eleven point nine as of March twenty-seventh.
Okay.
So it changes based on the budgets that are getting voted down and reapproved. That number's gonna change.
Yep.
You have another handy answer?
There's three physicians that are, were cut, were those COVID positions? Or how were those positions funded, by tax or...
Yeah, there were, um, there were two physicians that were funded by, um, COVID money in this year's budget.
And they're vacant positions that you're doing?
There are two positions that were covered by COVID money. Those are not vacant, but the positions that were cutting are. Um, okay. We're trying not to cut staff that are working effectively. I think we're shifting where their salary money comes from. Okay. So, yeah, that's where I was, so I had gotten to that slide. So, so from two years ago, we'll be down three full-time teachers, which is our cut from the title funding and, um, two COVID teachers. And then, uh, the playground, furniture and lockers. Um, okay, so that was five hundred thousand dollars that we cut. Okay. So then we had the budget approved on April first, or March first. And then, yes, we'll do the next slide. And now we're voting again on the twenty-eighth.
Twenty.
Reconsidering vote warning.
Yeah, she's not finished with this slide.
Oh, okay.
When does the warning go out?
Work in progress.
Okay. Uh, so then we get into the actual budget. And it goes through what the costs were that really drive the budget. And the biggest line item is our tuition increase. Our tuition went up by thirteen percent, so that's less than, well, it's more now than the state average. But... And more than what we wanted.
And there's no...
I wonder if she should highlight, because this side's busy, and so we're looking at it for the first time and from far away.
It's very busy.
I think if the penultimate column is really the most important, that's where people will see that, cause the percentages sort of tell the wrong story, right? Cause if you vote only five percent increase in maintenance, but it's actually a twenty-five thousand dollars. So, I think, um, maybe if she can highlight the dollar difference, bold that column, because then people will see, like, where is the money really...
Actually, you know what I wanna do? I wanna move this slide down.
I'm just gonna move it. You have it, you have it.
Oh, yeah, do you have editing rights on?
Yeah, so I, I would rather go into a presentation of, um, the increases that we did not have control of.
Yeah.
Um, oh, sorry, that's the next, oh, so I just edited it, so I don't know what that does to you while you're presenting.
Let me, um...
There we go.
Go up a slide, keep, keep going.
She's trying to refresh.
Just try going up a slide.
Oh, oh, you went down.
Well, let me, let me refresh.
Oh, then it'll catch up, hold on one second.
It's gonna take me right back. Beginning, so...
That's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's kind of like a, it's not a very nice bit to be... Cause they can, and you can see the difference in school prices.
Okay.
What is this? We're just talking about, uh, which schools can have, uh, set their prices.
They can set their rate, whatever they want.
How they can use tuition districts to set whatever they want.
Yeah, and it's a little scary.
It could be unrelated to what they charge their own town.
Absolutely, residents.
Yep.
They can charge...
Whatever they want.
A hundred thousand dollars per kid if they want, two hundred. And we would have to say, okay.
Right.
Only if it was a private school, states, it's a lot.
Yeah, yeah, that's, which is a number, because they should do it.
Yeah, you think they would set it for...
We said for whatever, but...
Yeah.
Okay, that would get...
Yep, I'm gonna make this bigger. It's very slow tonight.
No, the, the, they would set the same rate for all schools.
Oh, 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 oh.
So like...
I thought you said that we would set the...
But it's more expensive to educate kids on this side of the mountains than it is for whatever reason on the other side of the mountains. Okay, that slide moved. So now you're in...
Yeah, so now, so we'll, we'll talk about the things that we can't control, and we can't control the high school tuition, which is almost half, it's forty percent of our increase. And then benefits are negotiated at the state level, which, with those two combined, we're at sixty percent of our increase. And then the SU assessment gets us up to eighty percent of the increase.
And the driving factor in that is special education.
Right, and it's the individual service plans for individual kids. And then the staff wages, those were also negotiated at the SU level. So that causes a total budget increase of one million and fifty thousand dollars.
And I think the next slide is the one that shows that the factors outside of our control are greater than one million and forty-nine dollars.
Yes.
The fact that's out of our control, total one million and seventy dollars or something?
Yeah, uh, hold on, I need to move that total budget. I put it in the wrong spot. Okay, there, okay. So, yeah, so then I...
Can I go two slides forward?
Yeah, go two slides forward. Okay, so then, the total budget increase, and then the total increases that are out of our control, and so we have managed to cut within our K eight budget to offset the factors that are out of our control.
Right.
Okay. But then, then I have the slide that I moved again, and then we go to staffing. So, this current year, we have thirty-three people in-house, next year we'll have thirty-two. Um, and that's certified individuals that are on Heartland's payroll that this board has control of. And then, the next slide. Okay, so then we go into what's changed.
Just what's, what's happened in education and the demands that are placed upon our schools and our staff.
Yep.
Which I think is important for people to understand.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's really important for people to understand that the kids that are showing up in our schools are not ready to learn, and that it takes a lot of resources to prepare those kids for learning. And it's also, I think it's important for people to understand that Heartland, on the outside, does not look to be a community of need, but the school population is a community of need. And that's really frustrating that the switch to universal meals caused us to lose the title position that was...
What's our, do you know what our direct certification was this? Uh, it was in the, uh, high thirties, I believe.
Whoa.
It was in the forties, so, I believe it was thirties.
That's the director's or not direct certification?
Uh, no, the total, the total, sorry.
Okay, okay, okay. So it's like, oh my god, there must be many titles.
A total, yeah.
Universal meals mandated, or was it true?
No, the state mandated.
The whole state was doing it?
The whole state is doing it. And the problem is, is that, so we used to collect free and reduced lunch papers. And that told us what the need was in our population, like, where our poverty was. And we used to send, collect all of that and just send it off, and we would get a rate based on those pieces of paper. And if we were above forty, which we were, so forty percent of our...
Title on school, yeah.
What?
You'd be a title on school.
Yeah, so forty percent of our population is in poverty and needs, typically needs extra services. And, um, we have those same kids in the building, but the switch to universal meals got rid of that paperwork. And they moved to a new way of calculating it. So we lost that federal funding because of that new way of...
We're at thirty-seven point five four percent.
Which is, which is seems fairly accurate, I mean, that's not...
Right, that's probably not...
Right.
It was higher, it was higher, and I think what happened with the new way of certifying, uh, Windsor went up considerably. So they're at forty-seven point thirty-two percent.
Wow. But I will say, I mean, I'll advocate that implementing universal meals far away the, the, the loss of that, that funding.
Right, it just complicates the, the process.
And not case.
And it's, and it's money coming out of the ad fund, which is what funds are.
Like, we're paying, like, again, the school's paying for it, again, schools are paying for everything.
Correct.
Cause schools are where people get fed, and schools are where kids get medicine, schools where we get mental health services.
Oh, yeah, we teach them.
Uh, well, yeah, and, yeah.
So are we billing the, the insurance companies that provide pain, provide healthcare to our kids?
No, that's what, that's what the state requires schools to do nowadays.
Find psychologists, behavioral specialists.
Yep, all of that.
And provide them to go get all the healthcare, to be able to...
Yeah, no, it's, uh, this is how the state's school system is completely working right now.
So Heartland's in much worse shape than other schools in the SU? Is that what I'm hearing, as far as the kids' mental health and that stuff? Because Heartland has far more interventionist positions than even Windsor High School that has five hundred, or Windsor K through twelve that has five hundred and twenty students. So, are we in such bad shape, our children, that we have, forgive me, but I think the number is like, it's five or six interventionists?
Yep, we have two social-emotional interventionists, I think, off the top of my head, Windsor School has five and a half, I think.
And Weatherfield has two.
And Weatherfield has two, Albert Bridge has three.
And compared to other towns equal in size in the state, it seems like Heartland is very heavy on the interventionist side. And I don't know, I'm not in the building or anything, so...
So we only have two?
We have two SEIs, but then we have academic interventionists.
Yeah, so there's differences between the ones that are mainly upsets in the mental health issues with the students versus, uh, like, they need extra help, it's an intervention. Like, let's get extra help for this kid in mathematics, so then they don't have to go on an I P.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, behavioral, academic and especially education, so those, they're different. Yeah. I just get the observation, the observationist title, you know, is, there seems to be a lot of them in Heartland, and I just, I don't understand, like, are we really in that bad of a position in technical? And it sounds like possibly, we may be.
We're, in terms of...
I think we're equal to other schools.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, um, mental health supports, behavioral supports, I mean, I was the principal here, it was, there are a lot, there are a lot of kids in need, yeah.
But is it, sorry, is, it, it seems to be that our services here are proportional to the services in the other schools in the district, right? There's five.
There's five and a half in Windsor, there's two in Weatherfield, Weatherfield is...
Proportional.
Size-wise, we're, population-wise, we're pretty close to Weatherfield, they have two, I don't know how many academic I'd have to look. But if you look at Albert Bridge, they're a school of fifty-five kids, they have three. So, some of it's dependent on the new student building.
And I understand some of the schools share the staff member, I, I understand that from, from you the other days.
I'm trying, Randy.
Yeah, and we're, so, don't look at us like we're villains.
No, 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 we're happy that you're here.
Gives the impression that, that's a little bit...
Is this all due to COVID?
It was there before COVID.
Yes.
I think it started, so you could see...
Start to freeze.
It's, yes, this is a huge problem, and, um, the, the recession in two thousand eight.
Yep.
You could see a change in the kids from before two thousand eight and after two thousand eight. So those kids that were born in two thousand eight, you can see.
And I think COVID then was just like, that's wrong.
Yeah, cellphone proliferation and then COVID.
Yeah, the states.
Yes.
Or... I will give that to you guys. The more I read on the Acts one twenty-five, one twenty-seven, blah, 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 it's, the, our legislators are definitely kicking the can down the road with this.
Lot, lot of unfunded mandates, a lot of unfunded...
Yeah, for sure.
Just one more thing, specialized, like, we have so much special ed here, what's the reason for that compared to other schools?
Um, which schools are you comparing it to?
Uh, Weatherfield.
So I think we're across the SU average at about twenty-nine percent, the last I looked.
Those kids qualifying for special ed.
And I, I don't think, I, I'll find out for you, but I think it's pretty consistent across schools in the SU.
My parents, and I've heard from other people, that people come to Heartland, they wanna run, uh, Heartland, just say an address and they put their kids in Heartland. It happens to parents, to my neighbors.
For high school choice, that happens a lot, actually. People move to Heartland and Weatherfield because they, they have that opportunity for high school choice. And you see, it costs money, it does, but it's a value to this community and...
There used to, Heartland used to be, when I moved here, many, less years ago, Heartland did have a reputation for, um, its special ed services, but I don't think that that has carried, I don't think that there are kids moving to Heartland just because of special ed services.
Uh, from what I hear, it's more the high school, um, choice, but I'll find out the rates for the other schools for you.
But do we have, are we allowed to find those rates?
I think we can, like, the general...
Is there not?
You're not gonna identify anybody?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I will ask you...
Would just a special ed teacher that Heartland, a fair professional, a spread fair professional...
But isn't this, so, the...
If kids move on, do you think the positions would be pre-essential, those, like, specialized kids?
But isn't it also the effect of the self-contained classroom here?
There is that currently.
Yeah, we have a self-contained classroom here that is...
Meeting the needs of students in a way that we can do it.
So those might be students also coming from other schools from the district that need that type of level of service. And so that, how many staff are just in that classroom?
Well, we did that out of necessity this year, um, because we needed to, and it is currently, I wanna say there are three or four, and they're younger students in it, um, most were from Heartland, I think it'll expand next year. Staffed by one special educator, who's also still, um, trying to provide the services for the other students who are on a caseload, so it's, it's like, it's really, it's really challenging.
And what, and some of the special education services come from the SU level?
They all come from the...
They all, yeah, that's not, that's not, which gets shared.
Which gets shared.
No, that's part of the two forty-seven.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
And those are mandated by IEPs, I mean, we have to provide those services, so if, if the IEP demands additional support.
Individual education plan for each kid.
Yep, we have to have those staff to do that, so, and it, and it's an ebb and flow all the time.
So to help your slides, I'll put the coin, I would have to try to point those out on your slides.
Yeah, okay.
My parents have clue that they just see a, a number, about one million dollars, they have very same way.
Yep.
Yeah, and one of the switches that we made in my time on the board is that the special education services used to be local to the schools. But with, within Heartland, Weatherfield, Windsor, and West Windsor, we would have one super, super high-needs kid that may cost, you know, a hundred thousand dollars by themselves. They would go from Heartland and then over to Windsor for one year, and then come back to Heartland, and it was causing these massive spikes in the special education budget. So when we moved to the SU level.
Which is mandated by the state.
Which is also mandated by the state now.
Right.
That has smoothed that spike.
It also made it easier just with staffing.
Yeah, because we can move staff as needed.
Part-time here, part-time there, things like that, so we don't have to, yeah, hire more staff just because each school is.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of the SU staff do.
They, they, um, we pair people to where the needs are, so we have a student with needs that match a staff member in another building. You know, we have very, um, thoughtful and kind of strategic conversations, so it's hard to move people, to be honest with you.
But I was looking at our, like, the list of who we have in the building, and a lot of those people are, like, a couple hours. In all of the different, you know, there are a couple hour, like, like, speech, language isn't.
Speech and language, the BCBAs.
Yes.
Um, are in all of the schools, those school sites who do the testing are in all the schools.
Right, yeah. So it's, it looks like they're just in Heartland.
Yeah.
But they're in, they're in all of the schools, yeah.
Okay, next is. Okay, that's an act, you can move it around if you.
Yeah, um, so we're at two point three-three now, um.
Came down a cent and a half.
Yeah, the legislature, maybe ten and a half.
Nice one, nice one, Steve.
Uh, yeah, and then the next one is, um.
Sorry, can you go back one slide, because I'm just reading that, the last clause on that is without, the current tax rate would have decreased.
Yes.
If lightly.
If our housing value hadn't skyrocketed, our tax rate would have decreased.
It's demonstrated on this slide.
Yeah, I think visually, I, we, I know we've got about this, you know, whether it's better visually or.
Right, so then the next slide is the visual of it.
Yeah.
Um, so the school-based tax rate is one point one-six, and then the adjustments are.
Which color is which I can't read it.
One point six-one, so the blue is, um, the blue is the state.
Yeah.
Your first dollar goes to the ed fund essentially. Uh, the green is your Heartland three K twelve FY twenty-five budget, that's sixty-one cents.
And then the seventy-two cents is what we pay to all the other schools.
Based on your.
Gosh.
Yeah, because our housing value was so much higher than. Yeah. So, um, so then.
Uh, I don't know that she's updated this one.
With the, what you're doing.
Yeah, this one is updated.
It doesn't have to be updated.
Make sure you take that penny off.
Yeah.
Take it off.
It'll be all very good.
Yeah, yeah. It's a penny and a half.
Oh, sorry. And that was because the yield changed by a small amount.
Yeah, right. As the town, as the towns that are re-trying to configure their budgets, you know, we heard that, oh, you're.
Something's happening.
We need.
Oh, we just need to touch the screen, I'm gonna.
Um, are they, Christine, as the towns who are, like, resubmitting their budgets and getting voted upon, if those budgets pass and they are, like, lower, then again, is this yield going down?
The yield, uh, yes, it could change up to Ju- June first, I believe, um, June or July.
Do they have to vote, I think they have to vote on it again?
Does the legislature have to be in session?
Like, do all the school budgets have to be voted on again before the end of May then? Well, the thirty percent that failed me that were rescinded still have to be voted on.
Some have been, some have been, um, voted down again and reworn, and they'll have to vote again. I know Springfield's failed twice, they're up again, um, they're putting forth the same budget, I believe, I heard, that is the last one, because they just can't, can't cut anymore for all the schools, so.
But we may get to this, she may have already updated this, because I have not looked at the updated versions, but we want to talk about sort of the process of this, if this fails, having to borrow from the state and having to pay the interest back.
That's on the fact sheet.
Okay, just to make sure we.
So, yeah, so, so we'll update that one, yep, going.
Two, you know what number slide that is by chance?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Yeah. Um, okay, so if we were to cut another five hundred thousand, that would be five full-time teachers. And we would not meet the quality standards anymore. And it would save a hundred and eleven dollars on a hundred thousand dollar house. So this, I mean, it kind of highlights that we're, like, we can't possibly cut enough staff to offset.
What happens if you're in a position that you're gonna be forced to open a school that doesn't meet educational quality standards? Can you, can you?
I mean, they don't, they go, I mean, they're.
Can students go to that school? Like, how does that work? Is it, like, do they get, like?
No, they can, I mean, it's, it's the, those are the standards we're supposed to abide by as best we can, um.
You do get audited.
Occasionally, yeah.
But like, we could graduate eighth graders from a school that's not meeting acceptable sta- educational standards?
Yeah.
Does that sort of sort of an accreditation?
Not for K eight.
Okay.
What about the second gym teacher? What about not hiring a second? Drisco did it for a number of years, Susan did it for a number of years, I, I'm.
They were together. Pete and Susan were here at the same time.
Yeah, Pete and Susan was not here in my tenure, so I'm not sure.
Susan was here.
Trace and Susan were here at the same time.
Trace Dancreedy was twenty years ago.
Yeah, when I was here with Susan Murphy.
Susan was here.
Yeah, they were both here.
Pete Drisco?
No, Trace Dancreedy and Susan Murphy.
I would say Pete, I would say Pete Drisco.
Oh, Keith Driscoll. Did it with Susan Murphy.
And then he did it with Angie Carpenter Henderson, in my tenure.
He was the first my teacher that, I can't even imagine.
Yeah, so, yeah, when I, when I ran the, the schedule, Randy, based on your question, I mean, I, a teacher teaches roughly five periods a day, if you're gonna break it down that way. And under EQS standards, each class has to have two PE classes a week, and we've got nine grades, eighteen cohorts, right? And so if you can't fit PE into a one full-time job, you could probably do a one and a half position, but our PE teachers are also teaching health and wellness, so, and there are standards for those that we're supposed to be addressing. So we're trying to use our resources in the most efficient ways that we can, um, and when I posted for a PE teacher, we require them to be dual-certified in health and PE, so we can use that one person for meeting both of those standards.
Yeah. But I think the big thing also is, like, again, like the slide shows, that even just cutting in one teacher, it doesn't do anything. It doesn't, it doesn't do anything. Cutting five teachers still really doesn't do very much.
Well, it does when people that are, yes, four hundred dollars, that's plenty, I, I.
Yeah, it's not four hundred dollars.
Portland is, doesn't get shot down.
A hundred, I mean, it would, the tax increase would still go up twenty-two percent.
Forty percent of our students in poverty right now, we're saying, right?
Yeah.
You know, driving more people out.
Yeah.
But they did.
Average house payment is nowhere near a hundred now.
Right.
All of our houses are appraised at four, five, six, seven, so.
Which is a problem.
Right.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Um, there, there is income sensitivity, I know that's not an answer, but there are people that.
And they did, legislature, and I haven't gotten a briefing yet on what the new bill did, but they did change some of the income sensitivity thresholds so that people that are on fixed incomes will qualify where they didn't under the old rules. So we need to get those new.
Home Stat Act.
Yeah.
Materials.
Because I think it's anybody under a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
I'd rather.
Hire for that now, because I call. Yeah, sixty-three percent of them is receiving that, and they'll continue to receive that.
Eighty-four, eighty-four million dollars is being left on the table because of, um, current use.
Well, yeah.
So I'm just wondering if none of the changes we're trying to make within our own budget are going to help when it comes to the taxes? Um, if we can't get someone from Montpelier that supposedly has pull to come and talk to, to the board at the meeting on the twenty-first? Or if we shouldn't just rent a couple of vans and all drive to Montpelier, because it seems like.
We have been.
Coming here with the church to the choir.
We have been hammering Montpelier, and that's why I say, like, when I started the meeting, that I can't tackle anything else. I have been texting our legislators and calling about, like, multiple times a week basis. I get updates from the floor of Montpelier all day long, I get videos of what's being voted on, and the, our legislators are the choir as well, they know exactly what's going on, especially Elizabeth Farrow, because she's in the next, she's on a board, she's on the, um, SU board, and she's on the, um, Thomas Scotty Board. And they get it. The problem is, is that the ed committee is not representative of this region. And they are making decisions that I think go against what most Vermonters want at this point. So we need to be continuously hounding and staying in the game.
But when we have Phil Scott come down and talk about this thing?
I don't, we can invite him.
We can invite him. I mean, he honestly, like, my impression is that he wants schools to fail. You know, from the day he walked into office, he has wanted schools to fail. And I think he is probably jumping for joy at this current situation because he is going to get his wish. And that is the scariest part to me, so.
It's not the scariest part of politics, but what we bring up there.
Yeah, you're right.
There's a, um, I don't exactly know where it was in which papers, but there was a new SU position, um, that was in the original budget for diversity and something, something, is that still in the new, new?
It is, the SU.
And what is that, um, curriculum going to be like?
Um, she, uh, Tracy Price is our diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator, so she works with all staff across the SU, um, trying to make sure that our schools are inclusive of all students, no matter what, um, to make sure all students have a sense of belonging, they're represented in our curriculum, they have a voice. Um, so her job is, uh, extensive, it's not just specifically around curriculum, I mean, she's on a committee, um, right now for hiring practices, how are we, how are our practices going to make sure we're attracting a diverse workforce? And, um, she brings, uh, a level of expertise that, um, pretty much, uh, awes me, I mean, she, she is.
She's gonna be working with all of the surrounding schools?
Yes.
So we're not just carrying her.
No.
Girls down or this?
It's part of the SU budget.
Okay. And Wes, were you in any committees with her?
Uh, we have a student group with her, were you in the student? Oh, yeah, 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 we have like a, a Heartland, um, school community inclusion group. Um, and we meet with her, uh, before Friday, and she's been amazing. Um, and, yeah, so we've been working, like, in our school to try to do ways, um, try to make everyone feel included and stuff. Um, so.
She is, I mean, there's, there's bullying in our schools, there's racism in our schools, and we're trying to, um, there's all sorts of isms in our, in our communities that we're trying to eliminate. Um, so she is the primary point person on that work, um, she's been educating the board, she's been educating the administrators, the teachers. Um, she, um, dissected our equity audit that we had, and, and, um, some of the work that she's doing addresses some of the, um, things that were brought to.
But from a socioeconomic standpoint, we are very diverse, and a lot of the work that she does, it, it doesn't, her work is inclusive of everybody, and by doing that is including the socioeconomic issues in there.
Special education.
Yeah, special education, transgender, all, all of the isms.
Right.
Um, she, she works to make us all figure out how everybody can move forward, how we can lift everybody up, um, and come together as a community, and I think she's been a phenomenal, she's, she's amazing.
She is.
Um, so, okay, so that, um, okay, so that's been updated.
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to go over the, uh, fax document that you and I have been pulling together. Did you make any edits to it, or did you just?
Not today.
Okay, yeah.
That's since this morning, so let me share this tab instead.
And then Larry also created some graphics.
He did, we can put them in here.
Yeah.
Depending on which ones we want. So.
Okay, yeah, so, oh, that's tiny.
Okay.
So, um, we started, I think we need less bullets on, um, the revote info, but, um.
You just need your most important ones, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to make it bigger.
Um, and I think, I mean, maybe for people in the room and listening, um, one of the challenges with creating a school budget is that we work from October until January to come up with our school budget, and we're completely in the dark because the state doesn't release any of the tax impacts until mid-January. And then our, the state typically releases the tax impacts about five days before the budget and the, um, ballot have to get, uh, to the governor. And so the board works in complete darkness because, as I said, we develop our budget based on what we think we need in the school, but our tax rate is set at a statewide level. Um, and so it's really frustrating to, to work towards what we think the school needs and then to find out that it's going to cause a thirty percent tax rate increase. But.
Yeah, after we've done.
After we've done all of this, like, five months' worth of work, and then you're like, okay, and so that's why we went back to the drawing board, um, to reduce, and then, um, so then we went to a revote, um, and the revote is just that, it's a revote of the existing budget. We're not allowed to make changes, um, prior to that vote, um, and I also, I don't know how you feel, I don't feel like there's much we can change. Um, so the revote will take place on May twenty-eighth, um, and then we'll have the budget information session on the twenty-first.
Can I just, for just sake of eighty million commas, can we take out the year twenty-twenty-four?
Like, sure.
For all of those, because I don't, I don't, I think, I think we're just talking about, you know, like, I feel like, yeah.
I forgot what I wrote there.
I kind of want to reduce, I want to edit down to like three bullets.
Yeah, the other thing is, I wonder, I mean, that, the, that, um, slide that Lindsay made demonstrating this in a timeline.
Yeah.
Might be easier to look at?
I was gonna put that, oh, that, yeah, that's a good idea.
And just copy and paste it in.
And just do, you know, minimal.
Timeline across the top.
Yeah.
Like that. Okay, so you don't have to change the date.
Okay, we'll just do that instead.
Yeah, so then I put together a true, false, um, and one of the things that I've heard a lot from a lot of people is, let's vote down the budget so we can send a message to Montpelier. Um, and I think that we need to make it really clear that the school has developed the budget we think that our students need, and that if we do not pass a budget by the end of June, what is the date on that? Is it June first or July first?
July, I believe.
Okay, if we don't pass a budget, then when we start our next school year on July first, we have to pay interest on all of, like, so it's gonna end up costing the town more.
Do you know what the interest rate is?
I do not know, but I imagine it's like six percent.
I've heard.
Yeah, so, so we would have to borrow the money from the state and then pay them back with interest.
While we try to pass the budget.
While we try to pass the budget. Um, so that adds, that will definitely add costs.
Right.
Um, and I don't, I don't think it'll send a message to Montpelier, I think they, they have the message, they have.
They have the message.
They are just not, they want to do anything about it.
Thirty, thirty percent of the budgets failed, and what have they done since then?
State mushroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's brought forth by students.
Okay, sorry, 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 sorry.
Well, that was not, yeah, that was not like, it was something, oh, no, it was the, uh, school board's appreciation week that happened when thirty percent of the budgets went down, that I was just, like, literally ready to punch my computer.
Usually enough like that. Um, so then additional cuts, um, will not save, um, tax, so, the other statement, additional cuts to the Heartland budget will save taxpayers significant money. Um, if, so we have forty-two people on our payroll, and for every staff member that we cut, somebody whose house that's appraised at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will save fifty-six dollars. Um, so, it is not. It would have a big impact on our kids, and it's fifty-six dollars. Um, okay, so, uh, the primary driver of tax increases is, um, is the significant increase in house value since our twenty nineteen appraisal. Um, so that means that the way that the state is taxing us is if you have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, the state is taxing us like your house is worth four hundred and twenty-two thousand. So it's worse if you have a $400,000 house, you're going to get taxed like you have a $750,000 or $800,000 house. Yeah, so that's why taxes are going up as significantly as they are. It's nothing like we can't do that. Heartland's 10% budget increase is significantly more than other communities, um, so we should.
We should change that.
Yeah, we should change that.
12%, it's at 11.9.
Yeah, it's 11, yeah.
I will change that.
But when we say the budget increase, I think we need to specify like the budget increase from last year's budget, not like.
The tax rate.
Yeah, because I feel like that reads a little funny.
Um, I, I do have an answer from Katie about your, your question.
Real time.
Yeah, she's on it. She said, um, I said, what are the rates of special ed at Weathersfield versus Heartland? Are we all at around 20%? And she said, give or take a percentage point, yes, I can run the hard numbers, do you need them now? And I said, no.
So all of them are the same?
Yeah. Which one? This one? The bottom one? 12.
Guys, I love this. Can we just write myth before the myths? Because there's just a risk that someone glances at this quickly, reads the bold and holds on to that as the fact, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So like myth, Heartland's 10% budget increase is significantly more than other communities.
That's, that's a great, I mean, I, I started to write an FAQ, but I couldn't come up with questions, so instead I'm.
No, I think this is great. I think this is great. I think just to make sure that if somebody, you know, everybody's busy, we all read things quickly.
Right.
You sometimes store the wrong facts, so just to make sure people are very clear that that is not.
Instead of word both?
No, no.
No, instead of saying myth.
So it should say myth, if voters vote down the budget, we will send a message to Montpelier.
Right.
Above that one.
Or like in front of it, or, you know, just to be very clear that like, we're not.
I think it needs to go right in front of the.
I think right in front of it.
Yeah, right in front of it.
It needs to be big and bold.
Okay.
And so, you know, you do like myth and fact, like those kinds of things, so then maybe myth and then fact, if Heartland does not pass the budget.
So we've got some more work to do.
Yeah.
Is there somebody that wants to leave that up?
Yeah, do you want to, um, do you want to share it with me?
Sure.
I, I think he needs, I'm trying to help her, but.
He needs a break.
I've not been able to keep up with the things right now.
You're doing a great job.
I hope you're negotiating. My family would disagree. Uh, there was another. Larry shared something with us while I was at a conference last week. The visual? Oh, it was a, it was a, it was a rate, it was a. It was a spreadsheet of, um, if your house was appraised at this, this is the value that you're being taxed on.
Yeah, I've got a snippet in front of me.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so he sent that to you. Why can I not find it? I was in it earlier today.
Do you want, is it an actual like image versus just words?
Yeah, that.
You put it in this document.
Has anybody mentioned it falling apart a little bit? There's a lot of, I believe. Thank you, Christine, for finding that. Okay, yeah, so this.
This is in there.
Terrifying. Okay. Are there any other ideas, comments, questions? I would kind of like to put together. A committee on budget or voting advertising.
Subcommittee?
But, yeah. Are we allowed to do a committee of free or are we only allowed to do a committee? Because then it's.
Two.
We're allowed to do that.
Unless you're going to warn it, make it public.
Right.
Then. Which you could do.
Then it would be. So. Yeah, yeah, I just wanted, so Hannah, do you, I guess maybe you and I can work together.
Well, how about Beth and I work together?
Okay, you and Beth work together.
I'll share this with you too.
Okay.
But we're going to work together on like signage.
Yeah.
And like.
Okay. And pamphlets.
But you were going to like talk to.
And pamphlet and.
Thank you so much.
Pamphlet, yeah, like whatever.
This.
Any flyers that you get done, we can print and get them, get that part done.
We can do that at the SU level or at the town level? Like, how do we do that?
Yeah.
SU?
Yeah, or Linda, you know, we'll get it done.
Okay.
Just let me know.
And we can like print it on just like white paper and stack it in places.
But then.
Um, so years ago, I have no idea where they might be now, but um, we had a school board meeting posters. And they were all laminated, so you could just change the date. And they were, they said, the, the, they said the time, the location, you just changed the date and they were this color green. And we put them up at the Damon Hall on the three poster.
Maybe.
Might be.
Every two weeks. But we should use, you guys should use that board because everyone looks at that board.
That's true, yeah. Yeah. Oh, you're right.
And then Bee Gees and Mikes, I mean, these weren't at Bee Gees and Mikes, they were at the town clerk's office.
Those were at Bee Gees and Mikes, they might have been taken.
I, well, I brought a bunch over to Bee Gees and Mikes.
Gotcha, yeah.
I mean, I, I rarely go into the town clerk's office, but I'm in Bee Gees every day.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the other question that I just wanted to, I've got, oh, still a lot more questions, but. So you said you cut the playground out of the budget, but the playground was from the capital reserve, I thought.
No.
Not, some, some of it was.
A small amount, about 25%.
75,000.
Yeah, about 25% of the budget was in the capital reserve and the remainder was in the school budget.
So it was like 150,000 or so in the school budget?
No, there was 200.
200?
Yeah, 30 in the school budget and 70.
So that was a little misleading because when I first, the first two votes said you were taking money out of the capital reserve for the playground.
Yeah.
But I didn't realize that it was actually buried in the budget.
So we had it, we had a slide about it and where the money was coming from in the informational present, in the first informational presentation. What we had done is we hoped if we went forward with the playground. We, the 70 that we put in the capital reserve was the amount that we assumed we would be able to get grants for. So that we wouldn't, so we didn't budget for the entire amount. We put an allocation in the capital reserve so that if we didn't get grants, we would still be able to fund the playground. But we thought we could get grants for about 70,000 of it.
Okay, so, and then like, so the second round when we actually voted on it, it was like at 10.
Right.
That we put in it. And that basically is just for like safety, stopgap measures, so like, right now there's cautionary one part of the playground. Like, so we just need some funds to like get that down so no one like gets injured, you know, and things like that. So that was where, that was, that 10K out of the capital reserves to be able to just like, and buy some extra additional like playground halls and things like that.
So I did, um, when I was on the board for a short stint. We, we voted in to have a capital reserve account. And to my understanding of what that could be used for. And this board was a little different, so I did call the Department of Ed. And I talked with Nicole Lee. And she did some research and she said that, um, these funds need to be kept in a separate account. And to be used for what the voters decide. However, if the voters authorize to use it for something, for something specific, it can still be withdrawn. For that purpose, it's not just for capital equipment or what have you. And some people disagree with me on taking some of the capital reserve money out. To help decrease the tax. Really, yeah, for the tax burden on the, um, the residents of the town. Because they say you'll have to make it up again next year when it goes up even higher and it's, you're just chasing your tail. That being said, there's a lot of people that are living paycheck to paycheck and just trying to figure out how they're going to get, you know, pay next month's mortgage. So, um, I, I don't, you said you can't change thi- this budget for, for May? And why is that we can't change the numbers?
Because, what's the law?
It's a reconsideration vote, so it's a reconsideration of the budget that passed in April. It has to be the same. If it fails, then the board can come back every seven days with a new budget and then they can adjust.
But we, but we changed it the first time.
We rescind it. We rescind it because the legislature.
We never voted.
Asked us to do that, encouraged us to do that, it was never voted on. The board, it's, think of it as the board cut the first budget or failed the first budget essentially. Made cuts and that budget went forth to the voters.
It was a little confusing because there was the informational meeting and then the articles were still included on the ballot. They didn't, I had thought they were going to cross out those articles, but they didn't, so it made it look like it was being voted upon.
And I think everybody felt like they were voting on it.
Yeah.
And again, I blame the legislature.
Yeah.
Because they literally changed the law.
Yeah.
Six days before that informational meeting.
What do you think about the capital reserve for this next month?
No.
No.
Okay.
And are we reconsidering article?
No, just the budget.
We're not reconsidering that capital reserve article, just the budget that passed. And there was no petition to reconsider that, so that's already done.
The $10,000 versus, versus the stopgap for the playground, yeah.
So that passed, so that money will come out of the capital reserve?
If we need it. If we don't get a grant or something like.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that'll fix.
So theoretically speaking, that capital reserve account, so we'll have the same balance year after year after year, unless we vote to put money in or vote to take money out.
And the board, the board hasn't, we haven't put money in in years because we have constantly applied deficits. To buy down taxes. And we have this year as well, or not deficits, surplus.
Surplus.
So we've used, instead of putting last year's surplus in the capital reserve account, we have chosen to use that surplus to buy down taxes.
How do we end up with a surplus?
In FY, it's the FY 23 surplus, we were, um, short-staffed, we couldn't fill positions. It's been a thing since COVID, um, so we ended up with a surplus. Yeah.
And those are some of the positions we've cut now that were unfilled.
And that gets reapplied to, for the taxes.
Yes, that, that comes off of this year's.
That was a choice and we decided to put it toward the taxes instead of.
Yeah. Great question, so.
Oh, I just, I just see that money sitting in there when it could help somebody save their house, so.
I mean. We have been drawing out of that usually to make pretty catastrophic repairs. So that those, so that those can happen when they need to happen. Like we had to replace all of the sinks in the plumbing.
Yeah.
On this hallway. And so. If we used all of that capital reserve.
We've got 343,609.
Although, is that right? Because I thought that was what we initially thought, but I thought you, as you just said, that you have, the taxpayers have to vote on it.
Yeah, you have to vote on it.
So you can warn it mid-year.
But like if.
We wouldn't have.
Take it out.
We spent a lot of money.
And that came in, so that was like a warned, voted upon use?
That, for the sinks, we knew it was coming.
Yeah, got it, okay, so it had been warned and voted upon, okay, okay.
Yeah, it was warned and voted upon.
Because you can't, it's not like it's just sitting there to use for.
No, no, no.
So it's not like the boiler explodes tomorrow, we're going to grab that money.
Grab the money, it still has to go through due process of, okay.
No, no, we'd have to go with, oh. Just confirming that.
And it's, to me, it's important to have that.
Money.
Emergency fund.
Yeah.
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 It's.
Yeah.
Although I'm happy to know, I did not, I thought it had to be used for capital equipment, so it is, that is good information to know that. As long as it's voted on. Because theoretically, if we can't pass a budget, that would, you could warn to just take that out and use it.
Or we have to pass some of it, yeah.
Well, no, I know, but.
Which I think, yeah.
There's not much in there. I know, what would that even? I wouldn't, I think it would.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, I think we've got a committee, I thank you guys so much.
Yes.
We'll definitely sleep better, knowing that I have. Okay, so moving on to the childcare tax.
Yes.
We had that discussion at the SU about level.
Now we're paying for childcare.
Like, because here's another state mandate.
Here we go.
So the SU board. What?
But you can't actually get.
I can't actually get a child care for my baby. The state of Vermont, but. With no daycare.
I mean, maybe, maybe the tax will help.
Yeah.
Let us know.
Okay.
Maybe with Julian's pod.
That's right, I was going to say I'm not having another one to find out.
Um, Marsha. So the SU board voted to, um, to make that an employer. Mainly, uh, we're only allowed to have 0.11.
You can pass that much on to the employee.
Is this 0.1% or is this 0.11 cents?
Uh, percent.
A percent.
Can you, do you have the data on what the actual dollar amounts were? Somebody share that.
It was, it was pretty small. A total, it was 45,000 across all our four.
SU.
Districts, well, SU, Heartland, Weathersfield and Mount Stutney, so, I mean, it's probably around $10,000.
Okay.
Um, and then if you said 0.11 of that or whatever.
What we talked about at the SU level was that.
Yeah, yeah, $9,000.
The accounting of having to separate it would.
Cost more than the.
Pretty much offset the, having the employee pay it.
Yeah. So we don't pay an accountant to figure out this thing.
Yes.
Oh, good lord.
And if all of the Weathersfields do the same thing, then that accounting still applies. So if Heartland does something differently.
So SU is going to. Pay it.
Pay it.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Mount Stutney is.
Is paying it.
Paying it. Weathersfield?
There next week.
Okay.
Here this week, yeah.
So the total tax is around 10,000.
For Heartland.
And then.
Yeah. If you paid all of it.
And, yeah, if we paid all of it, so the 0.1 is like.
It's not a lot.
Yeah.
It really is.
Right.
It's a small amount.
Yeah.
You'd pass it on to employees.
And every employee in the building pays for it.
Yep. It's a, it's a, yeah, it's a state, I mean, it's a childcare tax on payroll.
So it's like a new payroll tax.
So everyone in the state now is doing this. Yeah, we're all getting charged a new.
Your school, too.
A new tax, so I'm sure, but like, it's not just the school, it's like everybody, like everybody's getting.
Well, everyone employed by the state, all state employers.
No.
No.
And anyone who lives in the state.
Oh, anybody.
Because this caused a big kerfuffle at my husband's work. But if you, my husband's business is in New Hampshire too, and they have to, now they have to separate out the employees that live in Vermont. And tax them this extra amount.
Yeah, okay.
I would make a motion that we just cover the 0.11.
The whole thing, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so Hannah made a motion, Heather seconded, is there any further discussion? Okay, so I'll do, uh, we'll do a, uh. Have I mentioned I'm frying?
A roll call?
I'll do a roll call. I'm not.
We don't have to do a roll call, right?
No, we don't have to do a roll call, we can just do a vote. Okay, all those in favor of, um, the employer covering, being the school, covering the entire tax, childcare tax, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Are there any extensions? Okay, so that passed five to nothing, okay. On to the next, setting the next agenda. The next.
It'll be, it'll be our retreat.
Right, it'll be our retreat, so, but the next, I mean, we'll all be together again, we've already set the next agenda, which is another informational meeting.
Yeah.
And, um, that's the 21st, yeah. Yeah, so the next one will be our June retreat.
Yep. It's the 4th.
Right, and so is, does the 4th work with everyone?
What is it, June 4th? Is it just the Tuesday?
Yeah, it's a Tuesday, we usually try to, you're still going to be in school.
I'm always in school.
I'm in school.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, I, it's fine, it's fine.
We usually try to get together at 5:00 and we go from like 5:00 to 8:00 or 9:00.
Yep.
Um, so that we can eat dinner and.
Is Alina going to make delicious, wait, does Alina get to make a delicious thing for us?
Yeah, she does. She's not out of here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah, she will be there.
Will, will it be at your home again?
Yeah, I can host again.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to host.
Yeah.
Christine, just let herself in.
I'll let you all in.
This is pretty easy, you just heard it all. I ran down the pickup truck and Christine showed up when I wasn't there. So Christine just like, at that point, she did where it was.
Um, okay, and.
And we can, we don't have to set that agenda right now.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, we're going to have to look her out.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I think so much just depends on this vote, because.
Yeah, right, right. And I think, I'd like to keep the retreats.
Yeah, we may create another.
Still the retreat, and so I think maybe we choose to warn a different meeting here, um, if we want to talk budget again.
Yep.
So we will not talk budget at the retreat.
So we'll wait until what happens and then we'll decide.
And then we'll decide. Does the budget, everybody else, the retreat is where we get, we sit down, we have to warn it because we're all in the same room, but we have dinner together and.
We make no decisions.